Councilmember Lefredo?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Quinn?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Here.
Mayor Campbell?
Here.
Please stand for a public reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, we would like to present a proclamation. I have to get the ready order. May I have the young ladies come forward, please? And gentlemen? The city of Asbury Park, New Jersey proclamation, whereas Red Ribbon Week began after the kidnapping, torture, and brutal murder of Drug Enforcement Administration, the EA agent Enrique Kiki. Camera run on, let me try this again, Camerino in 1985 while Agent Camerino had been working undercover in Guadalajara, Mexico for over four years and whereas the dramatic events that followed Agent Camerino and his pilot Captain Zavala Avilas disappearance were chronic in national media here in the United States exposed the dark world of drug trafficking. And whereas in Agent Camerino's hometown, Calalexico, California, the public outpouring of support turned into an organized community response in which citizens donned red ribbons and became a voice for prevention in order to reduce the demand for illegal drugs and illegal use of legal drugs in America. And in 1988, Red Ribbon Week was recognized nationally with President Ronald Reagan and First Lady Nancy Reagan serving as the honorary chairs. And whereas today, the Red Ribbon Week brings millions of people together to raise awareness regarding the need of alcohol, tobacco, and other drug and violence prevention, early intervention and treatment services, and is currently the largest, most visible prevention awareness campaign observed annually in the United States. And whereas Red Ribbon Week serves as a vehicle for communities and individuals to take a stand for the hopes of dreams, hopes and dreams of America's children and youth through a commitment to drug prevention and education and a personal commitment to live drug-free lives. Now therefore be it resolved that the Marion City Council of Asbury Park, in collaboration with Youth Time to Shine, a committee of the Prevention Coalition of Monmouth County and affiliate of Prevention First, do hereby recognize the significance and importance of Red Ribbon interventions and hereby declare October 23rd through October 31st, 2014 to be Red Ribbon Week within the city of Asbury Park. Thank you. Now?
Hi, my name is Lily Ann Nickens and I am the Youth Chairperson of the Youth Time to Shine. Youth Time to Shine is a committee of the Prevention Coalition of Monmouth County. On September 25th, parents and attendees signed the Red Ribbon banner when they attended the town hall meeting held in this chamber. We, the members of Youth Time to Shine, would like to present this to the council and city in a desire to be displayed on the week of October 23rd through the 31st, and we are asking that the city of Asbury Park recognizes Red Ribbon Week annually. We also have presented the council with red ribbons and water bottles for you. Thank you.
Okay, whoever, do you want?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. As to compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Cochrane Star Ledger on December 18th, 2013, and posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are in file with the city clerk. May I have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting with a three-minute time limit for each speaker, one turnaround? Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order and terminate any further comments. Please come to the mic, state your name, address, and you have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, Pam Lamberton, Sixth Avenue. I have a question regarding conflict of interest. I think that the microbrewery idea is fantastic, I love it, but I have a problem with the city planner, the planner for the zoning board, the planner for the planning board, testifying in front of you on behalf of an applicant. I think that's extremely inappropriate. He can come to you and present an idea for modifications to the development plan, but to come and speak specifically about a certain application and what this applicant wants to do in this specific location, I believe is inappropriate. The same thing happened a week or a meeting or two ago when he also spoke on behalf of the Michaels Group. If he should be speaking to you about the plan, he should be speaking on your behalf, he should not be presenting to you an applicant's position. Mayor Campbell, I think you were right on when you questioned what you questioned about. I think, if I can reiterate what I think was your point is, we already have a redevelopment plan downtown, we have things designated for certain areas, and we have other areas in the city that are just waiting. So why redefine an area that's already defined and keep those other areas still vacant? I'd love to see you, I'd love to see the council consider with Don's guidance a change, as Councilwoman Moore suggests, a change to the plan rather than a specific applicant's variance or deviation from that plan. Can I make that clear? Thank you.
Well, stay up there for a second, Pam. So part of what I heard Don say was that, as a professional, you know, in his official capacity, he supported the distillery downtown, which I have no problem with, right? That's why we're paying you. For you, you're the planner, I'm not the planner, so I want your opinion on what you think works downtown and what doesn't.
Right.
So I guess I'm missing...
So the piece, the piece where I believe he overstepped his bounds was saying, "This applicant in this location is a good idea." He should be, he should be dealing with the plan in generalities, not for specific applicants, because then what he's asking you to do is, is to create a variance of the plan for this one applicant, rather than, as Councilwoman Moore suggests, is let's just change the plan the way it should be changed.
Thank you, but there was more to it than that. It was also the location, what it was going to be there in conjunction with. Also, the law hadn't changed until recently, that these type of uses weren't even allowed.
Totally agree.
So, and Don did a very good job in explaining that to us also.
Yes.
So I personally don't feel he was beyond his bounds. I understand where you're going with this, but I do appreciate the planner's comments and I happen to agree with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori Ross, West Side Community Center, 115 Dwood Avenue. With regards to the redevelopment director and the planner, I have a couple of questions with regard to the resolution for Metro Company to come in and do the HUD five-year plan. I'm trying to figure out why can't the city save some money and have the in-house staff complete that plan when you have two candidates running for office as program monitors who actually did the five-year plan? I myself have done two five-year plans, and the other issue is you're violating your MOU with the state of New Jersey. When you submitted your transitional aid application, which the mayor signed on March 14th of this year, it stipulates that you must abide by these stipulations in the MOU. You have to bid this out. This is a professional services contract that must be bidded out. But even beyond that, you have a community development director, and the council package, I see that Ms. Dickerson, as community development director, and Ms. Brown had a meeting, and I guess it looked like there was an execution of a document by which Metro Company was already awarded that, so I guess it's, I guess what's waiting now is a resolution to approve that. But again, I'm trying to figure out how can you do that unless this was bidded out? So the question is, was this bidded out? Two, why can't the redevelopment director, the planner, and your community development director and staff get this simplistic grant done? I've done two of them. The other two candidates have done them as well. It's not a hard task. You have four months to do it, get it done. Combine with the part that I find very troubling, there's two other parts I find very troubling in that you're going to give this consultant access to your integrated dispersment and information system, which allows them to look at your financials and potentially do drawdowns. Now, I'm not saying that the Metro Homes would do it, but giving them access to your ITIS system will allow them to potentially do drawdowns, and I think that that's unconscionable. Combined with, in fact, the last part of the puzzle that, again, I find very troubling is that there's a letter from Ms. Hazel Samuels, your former community development director, dated December 4th, 2009, where she's approving, well, she's enclosed a signed agreement for Metro to perform the work. Now, quite frankly, with the housing authority being in the paper recently about the scandals, I wouldn't go by her judgment or anybody affiliated at that time. Also, just to note that when you go on HUD's website, you see Cassandra Dickerson as the acting director, but when you click on the email to send her an email, it goes to hazelsamuels@yahoo.com. Who is watching the store, and I'll wait for the council to answer and the attorneys.
Council, I could quickly provide several answers to Ms. Ross's questions. There were three quotes that were solicited. Metro Homes was the lowest quote. The city was successful five years ago. Metro Company, rather, not Homes, Metro Company provided the five-year plan five years ago. The city was successful and was awarded the grant at that time. We assume that we'll continue with being successful with Metro. The Division of Local Government Services has seen the contract and has provided approval in accordance with the MOU that the city has with the state. With the comment regarding some email going to some woman, Hazel, I'm just unfamiliar with that.
Well, let me just clarify. In 2000...
Excuse me, excuse me. Your three minutes are up. I will clarify that Hazel Samuels used to be Director of Community Development. Thank you, Ms. Ross. Next? I'll follow up and write.
Hi, Rita Morano, Eighth Avenue.
Rita, how you feeling tonight?
Had surgery. Mr. Kelly, I never got the rest of the pilot programs that you promised me two weeks ago.
I provided you everything that we have, Ms. Morano. I have an open public records request form if you'd like to complete here for you tonight, where you can provide me your email address. When anything becomes free, I'll be happy to forward it to you.
That's what you said two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago? Obviously, we don't have anything new to add. Again, if you have a request, I have an open public records request form for you to complete, so I have your proper mailing address and/or email address. So when those documents do become available, I can provide them to you.
Well, time is of the essence, because if those pilot programs that you didn't give me, didn't pay their taxes, I want them on the tax lien list where they belong. That's why I think there's a time limit when you could put the properties on the tax lien and it's coming up. So those properties have to be put on there. And talking about real property, I happened to look up a little information about how much property is tax exempt in this city. Five hundred and sixty-seven million, two hundred and seventy-eight, plus five hundred. Now, that's one-third of what our worth is in this town. This has got to stop, and I don't know what you're doing tonight, I couldn't hear, but if the Michael program is getting either a pilot program or a tax exemption. Are they getting both?
The Michaels Group has requested a pilot pursuant to the HMFA laws. It was tabled this evening.
Well, do they get both?
When you say, "Do they get both?", the property would be exempt from taxation, it would be paying, it would be making a pilot, a payment in lieu of tax.
Do you know how much money we're losing every year with these pilot programs? This is only part of it. There's more to it. This has got to stop. You've got to change the zoning. We cannot continue this route. Taxes keep going up. There's one building on Main Street, I'm not going to mention which it is. It's tax exempt. It's a huge building, three floors, and it only pays thirteen thousand dollars in taxes. It's almost as high, I'm a moose as high as that. You can't continue this route. You've got to change things. I know there's only a couple more months left, but let's start thinking about it. We cannot continue this. If you look in the abstract of the county, we're like the second ones. There's only one other county that gives, one other town that gives more, and that's Middletown, and it's much bigger than Asbury Park. Square mileage, one mile, and we have all this tax exempt? It's not right.
Thank you.
I just got to add one quick thing. At the meeting two weeks ago, excuse me, Rita, you brought up about past pilots that might not have been paid, and Jack, it was my understanding, you said they will definitely be on the tax lien list. So if that's not going to be true, let's find out about it tonight. So, we sent everybody out a bill that owed us. We discovered some people owed us more money. We sent them a bill. I don't know if they paid us, but I was told, and we were all told, and you said two weeks ago, if they don't pay us by such-and-such a date, they've been notified, they had to be notified by either October 15th or October 31st, and they were notified well before that, they will be on the December accelerated tax lien list. That's correct, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. So if they, if they don't pay, they'll be on the accelerated tax lien list in December and will get what they owe in full plus a premium, instead of taking a partial payment. So I'd rather get it in full and a premium. But, so now we know for sure, everything will be on the tax lien list. Thank you.
Dwayne Small, 1304 Madison Avenue, Asbury Park, New Jersey. That sounds like, did you say five hundred million?
That's a number.
That's a lot of money. Well, 1% of that, we could be off the transitional aid, couldn't we? Right or wrong? We have to figure out, we have to look at that, man, and do something about that. That's a lot of money. She should not be paying the same amount in taxes as a building like that. Something wrong with that. I'm quite sure anybody in here would feel the same way. I understand we need development, but guess what? That don't mean we get a house away. You know, a lot of people came and did, like you said, man, Asbury back. Everybody want to come here. Everybody wants to come here. Somebody want to develop in here, they sign an agreement, that's telling you they got the money. Don't come back to me and tell me you need this, and you need this, and you need that, and taking away from the taxpayers. We represent the taxpayers, and this is what people have to understand. Can't be spending my money like that. I don't even spend my own money like that, and I work hard for it, but I want to move on from that. I ain't even want to talk about that, but when you mentioned that five hundred million, listen, that's a lot of money. I want to talk about this election. It's a lot of stuff going on. One of the things that we agreed to is that we would stick to the issues, we wouldn't attack people, and we doing just that, and I commend you for that, John. I commend you for that, because I understand what's going on, and you understand what's going on. But we have people attacking and spreading this fear amongst the people, which continues to divide us. It continues to divide us. I'm getting phone calls from the newspaper about something happening in Bradley Beach that I don't have no knowledge of, but want to associate us with it. We selling drugs at our campaign office? But how many of them called and told the newspaper that we had a Great Gospel Fest? That grandmothers, grandfathers, and children had a great night at the bowling alley? They said, "Nobody called and said that." How many of them mentioned that members of the A-Team actually have participated in bringing about a truce amongst our young brothers and sisters in the street that's fighting and killing each other, but others is taking credit for it? The boots on the ground, but they're not mentioning that. Only thing I have to say to all of the goodwill and good-conscious people in Asbury Park, don't let them continue to divide us. It's more of us than it is them. Thank you.
Just real quick, and nothing, the last quote was fine. When we're talking about the tax abatements and talking about the places that are not paying taxes, a lot of those are religious organizations, and they come in as religious organizations, and it's very difficult for us, because if they sue us, they would as inherently beneficial use. Let's not mistake pilots for not paying taxes when a company pays a pilot. They actually make the city whole, a whole, and their share of the taxes. But yes, we do have a lot of non-taxable entities in this city, and it is too many. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilman, thank you. If I could just add to that, there are things as well, such as all the county parks have to be assessed, every property has to have an assessment, and some of those are exempt. So we're talking about Sunset Park, Bradley Park, the Boardwalk, the State Office Building, Bangin's Garage, the VFW Hall, all the churches, all the schools. So we are talking about a significant amount of properties that are providing a public value to the, to the community. So these are the exempt properties that is often discussed but lumped into one number.
No, this is real property. It's real. It's not, it's not parks.
Next, please.
I have to correct.
Next.
Because it's real.
Mr. Scirano, would you like to come to the mic?
Hello, Jerry Scirano, Long Branch. I got to ask somebody in, everybody in this room, how many people here do not know Rita Morano's real mailing address? Does anybody in this room not know her real mailing address or where she lives? Okay, maybe one person, then you must be a newbie. Thank you. Okay, the other thing I wanted to say is, I read in the paper, I believe it was Metro Home, and two people from the city hall were going to work on the five-year plan, and I'm a little concerned about that, having been an investor. What qualification do those two city employees have to work on a five-year plan for the future of this city? I don't know. I wouldn't let my secretary do my business for me, but that's me, I'm not a real business person. Okay, the other thing is, how are we doing with GPS systems in all the city vehicles? Is that going to happen? How are we doing with the time clock? How are we doing with the bi-weekly meetings or the monthly reports so the taxpayers could have some input on what, on how the city's spending the money? And what are we doing with all these new projects? Are we demanding that they hire local people? What's the percentage? I mean, it's an election year, everybody should be rallying for the citizen, not the redevelopers. Have some answers, please.
I have a minute and a half.
Yeah, again, Jerry, I think we've discussed this previously. Did you, I don't know if you mentioned time clocks tonight, you may not have, but we are, and every employee signs in and out, GPS for our vehicles. We have GPS in all of our police cars right now. We are a very tiny city. We probably will not have the expense of adding GPS to all our vehicles. Regarding our redevelopment agreements, we are actually going to require Carter Sackman to have low and moderate income on his next project, and also to use a target of 25% of both label, local labor and material.
Okay, I appreciate that our police cars have GPS, but I was a little bit more concerned about supervisors and the fire department and vehicle, other vehicles. I think all vehicles that the taxpayers sponsor should have GPS, because we pay for the gas and insurance, and I don't think there should be free taxi service or grocery vehicle. That's all I like to get my point across. Thank you very much, Jack.
Denise Richardson, 30 Ridge Avenue. Just FYI, the Monmouth County Health Department will be holding a flu clinic October 22nd at the Senior Center from 12:30 to 1:30. The cost is $25. If you have Medicare, there is no charge, if you have the insurances associated with, on the list. Also, I want to say thank you to John Lefredo. I know you're not running next year, but I do want to thank you for your many years of services, and no matter what nobody says, the town started with a street full of empty stores, and everything is thriving down there. I truly want to get on record and say thank you for your services.
Move, close. All in favor? Aye. Okay, we are on to item E on the agenda, correspondence received by the city clerk's office. We have bid results for 909 Summerfield Avenue, and a letter from Paul Fernicola, the mayor of Lock Forest.
Item F? I've said this before, it's bid results for 909 Summerfield Avenue. It's taking, in this case, which I'm not sure if it's even the right amount, because I think that amounts too much, and it's RCA money, and whenever we approve expenditure of money, it shouldn't be correspondence we should be voting on. So somehow, it's listed on the correspondence, but I believe we should be voting on each one. And on this one, it's like $68,000, and I've always been told the max for RCA money is $25,000, so I'm just totally confused by it. Number one, again, I think it should be a council voting, it's city money. How do we just take a letter from the city clerk and say, "Okay, spend $68,000 without us saying yes or no"? And do we know if $68,000 is the correct amount? I know we've had that discussion briefly, where you say it's four units, but I've always been told that I'm on the Community Action Network Housing Committee, and I wish Danny Harris was here, but Carrie, you're on it.
He is, he is.
But where's Danny?
But Timmy?
I have Danny. But I always thought there was a cap, either $25,000 was the numbers. Yep.
Well, Tim, Tim Harris, and this is, Tim, do you want to stand up? That's Danny Harris's brother.
That's who, that's who, what?
That is, this is the RCA funds in effect. So he may be able to shed some light on it.
Sorry, your question?
Let me, let me, let me, let me, here's, I want to ask you a question.
Okay.
Danny, there's four, Tim, there's four units?
Yes.
You went to RCA to get approval?
Yes.
And they were told you could have how much per unit? And they were told you could have how much per unit?
The amount per unit is not outlined, but what was outlined was going through the building with the city inspector, going through the process of...
City, who said, which city inspector? Female or male?
Male.
Um, Vignoli, Vignati?
Okay.
Right. Going through, I went through the building with him. We walked through each of the areas that needed repair. We then went, and I actually went from the city's list of contractors, actually sent out seven bid requests. I did get three back. They, well, I didn't, they didn't come to me. They came to the city. They were submitted to the city. I received a letter back from the city indicating these were the bids. And which one would I accept? Because the only one within the range was anti-construction. I accepted that one.
Thank you.
Okay.
John, do you have any?
No, but I still say, and if he's right, and if I was drawing RCA money, but I still want to invest. I have no problem voting on this, but it's still, we're spending $68,000 worth of city money. I still think it should be a voting issue, not just, here, correspondence, throw it out the window.
Well, it...
Procedurally, we should vote on every dollar we spent.
We, we will, when the money gets paid to the contractor, we'll make sure that we have that on the, on the bill list regarding the dollar amount. I believe this is approximately $68,000, that there are four units involved. And Carrie Geno, who manages the program on behalf of the city, advised that this was acceptable based on the number of units. But I appreciate that comment and we'll make sure that those payments appear on the bill list.
But, but John, is, is the question, is the question for each unit, how much is allowable? And that's what doesn't seem to be clear.
The question was, I was told for each, maybe I was told wrong. Maybe Carrie explained it to me wrong. Maybe the housing subcommittee was explaining wrong. Reverend Lydell Akins, Carrie, we were told there was a $15,000 to $25,000 limit per address, not per unit. So maybe we were given wrong information. Okay, maybe we were given wrong information. So if I stand corrected, I stand corrected, but...
Well, I can, I can, I can attest to the fact that it is per unit, not per address. I can, I can attest to that. But I still have the question, I mean, if it's four units, I could see if it's $15,000, but we should know how much it is per unit. And if it's four units, $15,000 times four is 60. So why does it have here 68, 460?
Well, I don't believe the max is 15,000.
Okay.
And with four units, you'd be very close to 15,000. I believe the average over the dozen years or so we've been running the program is approximately 15,000 a unit. That is only an approximate number. The city has spent almost $5 million in direct grants to homeowners that are not required to be paid, paid back. After the 10-year lien period expired, the lien is then lifted. So these are $5 million of direct grants provided to homeowners that are renting their units to low and moderate income individuals. Quite honestly, I'm not sure if there is a specific maximum. Some of the money could be used and has been used to give to developers to build new units, and there is no limit that could be provided. I'm not saying in this program. I'm suggesting RCA dollars in other cities are used actually to provide to developers who are going to build new low and moderate income units. And there isn't a dollar limit that, that is...
Right, that's another thing. And I have no problem. I'm glad the gentleman's getting the money because truthfully, it was the biggest joke going. Again, I wish Danny Harris was here. He's your brother? How did you know?
I'm, I'm sorry.
He's your brother? Danny's your brother?
Oh, yeah. He's my brother.
Just because we have over $2 million sitting in the pot that nobody's taking advantage of. And it just irked me like nobody's taking advantage of. So if we can give you this money and it's all legal, you got my vote in a heartbeat. This is, somebody's bringing something new on me that I've been told for 13 months, something different. So, no problem.
It had been my understanding, you mentioned the 15,000 cap. It's my understanding that the cap was closer to 20.
I thought it was 25.
Well, you know...
No, no, per, per unit.
I thought it was 25 per household. Whatever it is, if it's legal, you got it. I'm all for it. I'm glad. Again, there's $2 million that's been sitting there for 10 years. Nobody's taking advantage of. Please tell your neighbors to come take advantage of it also.
Jack, thank you, thank you. Jack, could you ask Carrie to get us?
I, I will.
The, the maximum amount that can be spent per unit? And I concur with John, that money's sitting there. If you are a renter, ask your landlord, the owner, to apply for these funds. It is, hey, so all we have to do is look around town. We know not everybody looks, lives in a house that looks real nice. Please take advantage of it. Thank you. Sorry.
Nope.
We're on to item F, approval minutes.
Before we move on to item F, and I'd just like to add that Mr. Harris indicated that this particular estimate of $68,460 was the only one which apparently fell within the guidelines. And this is coming with the approval and recommendation of Carrie Geno, who administers the program, who I presume is familiar with the guidelines and the restrictions associated with the dollar amount and what's appropriate per unit. So I feel comfortable with your moving forward with this this evening. And then that just leaves us with Councilman Moore's question about whether you should vote on this individually. I know it's not listed on the agenda as requiring a vote. You have historically done that in the past, so I don't see any reason...
I have no problem with that. I have no problem. Let's just move forward.
Okay.
Mr. Kelly said those bills will be on the future bill list.
Be on the bill list.
And after the corporation gets paid. So...
Okay, on to item F, approval of minutes from the October 1st meeting.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
On to the bill resolution. I have a bill resolution for $1,417,297.90. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember?
Question. I, I thought some bills were going to be removed.
They were.
They were.
Yeah, the new amount was...
One million. There is a, there's $51,712.16 being removed. And being looked into, Jack, right?
Correct. I, I think the clerk was going to say that, but Councilwoman Henderson just moved that so quickly that clerk didn't get a chance.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes, minus the associate who needs to sign the bill.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, we're on to applications. I have two raffle licenses for various states from the Premier Theater Company and Asbury Park Heritage Musical Foundation. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
I have a application for a social affair permit for the Asbury Park Musical Heritage Foundation with approval by the Police Department.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, we're on to resolutions. I have a resolution awarding a professional contract for assistance in preparation of the five-year consolidated plan for funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Move it.
I have second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
So I wanted to ask, Jack, I mean, I still have the same questions that I had this morning about it. Why aren't we doing it in-house? What preparation are we doing to do this in-house? So I mean, I can abstain until those questions are answered, if that helps?
Well, I would suggest that staff does not believe they are capable of completing the application, that their three quotes were solicited. It's the same company that prepared the previous five-year plan. When the city was successful in keeping the grant for five years, the contract is being paid from CDBG funds. Again, the state has approved the contract.
And just as a matter of proper protocol, if any council member has any questions or comments about any item that's coming forward, please bring it forward as soon as a motion is, and a second is made before the clerk starts calling them.
Sure. Councilmember Quinn?
Obstain.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, I have a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Asbury Park referring proposed amendments to the Central Business District redevelopment plan to the city of Asbury Park Planning Board and directing the planning board to take certain actions pursuant to NJSA 48:12A-7. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing a shared service agreement with the Borough of Bradley Beach for public works related goods and services. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Item D, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Asbury Park acting as a waterfront redevelopment entity granting conceptual approval to Asbury Partners LLC regarding the proposed construction of a condominium development on a portion of block 3205. I'm referring the matter to the planning board for appropriate approvals.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Item E is being drawn. Item F, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Asbury Park authorizing the cancellation of certain tax, tax sale certificates pursuant to NJSA 54:5-111. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
A resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Asbury Park amending the designation of Michael's Development Company as redeveloper of certain parcels located within the city's Springwood Avenue redevelopment area and amending the redeveloper agreement binding between the city and Michael's Development Company. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
A resolution of the city of Asbury Park, County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey authorizing to purchase specific materials at public auction. Move it.
Second.
Question. This is an auction being held at Fort Monmouth where they're getting rid of, you name whatever they have, football fields, gymnasiums, everything. Why are we limiting ourselves to just L-file cabinets and L-file this? Why not just like leave it open? Like, how do we know like a bulldozer won't be available for $1,000?
I, I agree. I think we should amend this tonight. I was, I was thinking the same thing, that, you know, hindsight's always 20/20, saying, gee, we're probably limiting ourselves. You know, if Joe and Robert were to attend, there may be something extremely worthwhile, compressors and that type of information. So if the city council would like to broaden the, the authorization...
I think broaden, I was, before they use common sense, they don't bid a million dollars, so we don't feed.
Yeah, the only thing is, the statute requires that you get three written quotations for each of the items that you're going to bid on and that you not exceed 85% of the lowest quote.
Okay, so...
So if you were just to say, in the abstract, they could bid on anything, you're not technically in compliance with the statute.
Okay.
Wait, say that again, Josh?
You have to specify what items you're going to be bidding on and get three quotes. And you can only bid up to 85% of the low quote.
What we could do is review what is put out to bid, get the three quotes prior to this date.
In the future.
And then, and then...
You could do that.
That's good. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lefredo?
So are you amending it to include that language?
No, because, do you want to?
Well...
Oh, yeah, I have no problem.
Amend the language to, to allow the, the city to review the bid proposal from Fort Monmouth. And if there are other items, if time allows, to have finance get three quotes. And then that would allow the city to bid on things like compressors and other items that may be available.
Are these bids all taking place the same day while you're there?
Yes.
So how would you go back and get, from a practical point of view, how would that work?
Well, you need to do it in advance. So there's a bidder's list of a bunch of equipment that Joe Kuna and Robert probably have not had an opportunity to review yet, but finance did for certain equipment. And if time allows, I would have our city engineer review that list that is being auctioned off to see if we can get prices.
So I move we amend.
Second.
You're moving it as amended?
Yes.
It makes it easier. So, okay.
Move it as amended.
Correct.
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
I have a resolution of the city of Asbury Park, County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey authorizing compensation payment to Daniel Newman upon his separation of employment. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Resolution of the city of Asbury Park, the County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey authorizing compensation payment to Adam Menendez upon his separation of employment.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Resolution of the city of Asbury Park, the County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey providing for the insertion of special items of revenue in the 2014 budget of the city of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA 48:4-87. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing city membership in the Houston-Galveston area council cooperative purchasing system.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing three grant applications for the 2015 NJDOT Trust Fund Local Aid Program. Sunset Avenue Road Improvements Municipal Aid, Fourth Avenue Road Improvements Municipal Aid, Asbury Avenue Signal Improvement Safe Streets to Transit.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
A resolution for the Mental Health Continuation Grant from the State of New Jersey Department of Human Services. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, we have an introduction of an ordinance, the first reading, establishing a restricted parking space for use by handicapped persons at property located at 711 Grand Avenue designated as Block 3201, Lot 10 in the city of Asbury Park, and amending and supplementing Section 7-36 entitled Handicapped Parking of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Lefredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Have a public hearing on a bond ordinance. Have a public hearing on a bond ordinance...
And before you move on to that, we need to schedule a public hearing.
Oh.
Second meeting in November?
Yes, November 17th, I believe that is.
November 17. It's a Monday. Go that Monday.
The public hearing will be November 17th.
November 17.
We have a public hearing.
17, November.
We have a public hearing on a bond ordinance providing for acquisition of various equipment and vehicles in and by the city of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth, New Jersey, appropriating $1,500,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,428,000 bonds or notes of city to finance part of the costs thereof. A motion to open the public?
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
In section nine, next to the last page, I think you got a typo, about the middle of the page, where you have, right after exchange commission, you have parentheses. My copy has a little bit extra there, it should be the rule, I think.
Typo, it has to be a typo.
Yes. And I see that in this ordinance, you're purchasing several vehicles. I thought the city had an agreement with the county to purchase the vehicles through the county at a reduced rate. And is that still in effect, or...
I don't know of any agreement that the city has with the county. I could suggest to you that most vehicles are purchased off a state contract list where the state is pre-bidding the vehicles, and most of the time, that is one of the items that the state does extremely well by having vehicles on a state co-op. Extremely difficult to beat the pricing of vehicles on a state price list.
And that's all we're in, but Jim, yeah, we did a whole thing about, it was with the fire department, purchasing those vehicles. So yes and yes. It's actually, it goes hand in hand, it's the same thing. Okay. I just want to make sure that you're getting the best vehicle for your dollar, that's all.
Well, that is actually one of the reasons why we are joining this Gallaston co-op, because our fire chief decided that that was for purchasing ambulances, the best deal in town.
Thank you.
Laurie Ross, West Side Community Center, a couple just basic questions, and more for, I guess, my own education. Is there an inventory of existing vehicles and the dispensation of those vehicles?
Yes, there is an, an inventory of, of vehicles.
And there is a need for pass, are these passenger vehicles particularly for the Recreation and Social Services Department?
I believe they're vans.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that, I believe they are small vans.
Now, my question also is, the period of usefulness, why is it only for five years? Is that an accounting measure?
No.
Or would they, could you increase the period of usefulness and perhaps have a bond ordinance less than $1.5 million?
There is a standard list of life expectancy for general equipment. So when bond council prepared this, this bond ordinance, they referred to this standard useful life for certain equipment, and by coincidence, most of this, if not all of this equipment, had a standard useful life of five years. That's not to say that we're not driving cars that are six, seven, eight, and nine years old. It's just the standard in which we're able to sell these bonds. So we cannot excel, sell the bonds, the bonds can't have a longer maturity than the equipment.
Now, the protocols for using these said vehicles, is there a document that says how they get used, when? Because in a town so small, some of the vehicle purchases would seem somewhat questionable.
Well, there is a city personal policy and procedure manual that does govern the use of city vehicles.
When was it last updated?
2000.